Good evening. I would like to call to order the special meeting of the Moni Village Board of Trustees, November 20th, 2023. It is 6:14 PM. If everybody would please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Here.
Trustee Henson?
Present.
Trustee Horn? Trustee Rakis?
Present.
Trustee Wilson? Trustee Udras? Mayor Boggs?
Yes. All right, if I could have a motion to open the public hearing, please.
I'll make a motion.
Second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Henson?
Yes.
Trustee Rakis?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Mayor Boggs?
Yes. Since we have no public present, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Make that motion.
Second.
Or... During the public hearing? Okay. All right, Amy, you're on. We've got Amy Farnsworth, Amy Farnsworth, oh my gosh, we've got... Amy, Amy, yeah, Amy with Farnsworth to go over everything for us.
Yes, good evening, thank you. Amy Wilson, landscape architect with Farnsworth Group. I am here tonight to talk about the Fireman's Park Playground, the request for proposal. We put that out on October 20th, and it was advertised publicly. We did post one addendum to that. Again, that was advertised publicly. Bids, or proposals, rather, were due in on Wednesday of last week, and we received six submittals. So, the, I'm gonna kind of go over just the highlights of what the proposal asked for, and then I'm going to, I have a summary, a spreadsheet of what the proposals, kind of all of those comparably, and then I will highlight each of those, and then we'll kind of have a moment to have you look freely through the playgrounds. And I, Diana and I have gone through all of these at length, all of the proposals, and we do have a recommendation that we'd like for the board to consider for approval so that we're able to move forward and stay on time with our construction timeline. So, just to highlight the RFP, we were asking to seek a manufacturer or a sales representative for a manufacturer of playground equipment to provide to us a playground that would fit in the space that we had allocated in the master plan. It was to serve age groups two to five and five to 12. It was to have a swing set with three bays, two bucket swings, two belt swings, and two inclusive swings. We asked that there be structures for the two to five and the five to 12, that it be inclusive and accessible, and that the surfacing be engineered wood fiber, because that's what we had originally budgeted for. All installation needed to be included in the cost, and the overall budget was not to exceed $325,000. The manufacturer, the sales representative, needed to understand that this project was not going to be constructed, the beginning of construction for the entire overall project was not going to begin until spring of '24, and it wouldn't be completed until '25. So, they needed to anticipate if there were going to be increases in equipment costs, that they needed to not obviously max out the budget. It needed to give themselves a contingency because they can't, you know, necessarily hold those costs through. So, knowing that, we asked for references, we asked for images of references, we asked that they identify their history as a company and that they've done other projects similar to this and were qualified. We wanted to know who potentially would be on their team that would be working on these projects with us, and that they were going to be able to deliver this project to us in a timely fashion. So, of that, and the proposal, we did offer an opportunity for manufacturers and sales reps to schedule a pre-proposal meeting with Diana and myself to ask questions if needed or go over the site. We only had one company that took advantage of that, out of the six that did submit. We had pre-proposal meetings that were available on four different dates that companies, firms could schedule with us to have discussions and ask questions specific to the site or what our desires were ultimately for the playground, or if they had questions about the information in the proposal. And we only had one company take advantage of that opportunity.
One out of all six.
I can, yes. That was Play Illinois. Okay, so we did provide to them the master plan, as you can see, and we showed to them that this was what we had budgeted for. They knew that this was funded by OSLAD as well, so they know that there are prerequisites and that installation has to be done by a company, a certified installer, and it has to be prevailing wage requirements, so they all were aware of that. All right, so, this pretty proposal tabulation, which is hard to read in full, essentially, I'm gonna go ahead and go down the left side. What I wanted to identify is that the companies provided a firm profile that we asked for. Did they provide us a narrative of their key team members and resumes? Did they tell us and state their experience in completing equipment similar to our project requirements? Did they provide up to three examples of completed playground projects of similar scope and size within the last five years? That's important. Did they submit documentation showing research was done for development of the proposed equipment, specifically addressing the physical benefits for each of those components as it relates to that? So, we have a lot of, there's a lot of research companies do to make sure that it's not just a playground facility, that it's meeting all of the physical components for kids so that they can, you know, utilize all of the muscle groups from head to toe and are getting full use through all of the activities. And we wanted to see that whatever design they're putting together, that they are meeting all of those requirements. That they provided three references and images of those reference projects, that they provided history of similar services and products to other projects of relevant size, demonstrated capacity to perform work within the project's schedule, design creativity, meets best practice for inclusive play and recreation, fit our project area, they were within budget. Did their fee proposal cover design, manufacturing, and shipment? Did their fee proposal include equipment installation by certified installers? And did the fee proposal include the EWF, which stands, that's the Engineered Wood Fiber, which is the play surfacing, and the GeoTextile installation? And then any additional comments I added at the bottom, if there were exclusions on their proposals and whatnot. So, I would like to make note, I'm just gonna zoom out a little bit, that there were six proposals. We received proposals from Cunningham Recreation, they mailed in a proposal, we had a hard copy of that, so that one was scanned in to the OneDrive, to the link that was sent. We received electronic submittals then, from Compan was another company, the Larson Equipment and Furniture Company, New Toys, Play Illinois, and Team Reel. So, those were the six companies. Out of all six of those, Play Illinois, who happened to utilize the pre-proposal meeting option, was the only company that met every single one of our requests in the proposal. Of the others, they met the majority of them, and some did not, they, they were far from that. So, I have provided imagery on the wall representative of the options. A lot of the companies presented more than one option. All of them were under budget, a lot of them were very close to budget. I did have concerns that a lot of them had clauses and exclusions that said prices were only good for 30 days. One of the things that I would like to make note of is whomever we approved this evening, we are approving, working with that particular sales representative and that manufacturing company. We are not locked into the equipment that we're seeing. We're going to use that equipment design that they've shown to us as a basis, and we'll continue to work with them and develop the site as we develop construction documents over the next month for that, so you're aware.
So, what will potentially change any of that? Meaning, we go with this swing set, what would change us from not going with it? If it's just the guideline?
So, currently, we provided them with rectangular size, like on the site. We said, "We would like it to fit within this space," so by this width and this length. And we do have an actual site, though, that has grade changes on it. So, our site is to the west, just to the west of the recreation building and the pavilion. There's actually a grade change of five feet from the pavilion height down to where the bottom of the playground area leads. To have a safe playground space, you have to have no grade change, it has to be flat. So, we have to level that out. So, some of the companies have actually provided us, provided an option where they are utilizing a higher deck to make it ADA accessible. They would like to utilize that grade change, and they'd like to have somebody that's in a mobility device be able to enter from that higher level up onto a higher deck so that it's ADA accessible at a higher deck. And then they also want to make it so that they can be accessible at the lower edge. So, they want the grading to be a little bit different. So, we would have to rearrange, once we have their CAD components, we'd have to rearrange the play equipment. So, it wouldn't necessarily be a change in play equipment. It might be rearranging on how it's located, like on the site.
So, it's the layout, not so much the...
Not so much the pieces of equipment, but there are some things that, that have been added, that all of the manufacturers added things in that we didn't necessarily ask for. And so, we don't know if it's a good use of funds just to add additional equipment just because you had money just to add additional equipment. Do you see what I'm saying?
I understand.
Yeah.
And this is for the playground facility part of it itself, and that's it?
Correct. Yep, only the playground.
And anything outside of that would not be, that would be completely secondary and not in the proposal or anything that's going on within that space?
Correct. This is only specific to the playground equipment and the play surfacing, so it's insulation. So, a lot of this, the reason why we had to do this separately or we broke this out is all of these things, there's so much flexibility in design and components between manufacturers that you really can't get apples to apples. So, you have to put out an RFP to select a manufacturer, and then you work with them directly. Then they utilize what's called cooperative purchasing.
Okay.
It's a national contracting agency, which they go through a national bid every year, and they get the best pricing on those. So, then we would take that manufacturer's pricing, and we would purchase, direct, it's called owner buy, through the cooperative purchasing agreement, and you actually get it at the discounted national contracting price. And you get exactly what you want for that price, and they install it as well.
So, the only thing we're worried about changing in the play area would be sizing due to placement for swing set A or B due to any kind of change from the height of the pavilion to the playing ground for anyone in the need of an ADA compliance issue?
Potentially, yes. I mean, we have the ability to, to maneuver and switch things out to stay within budget once we get started and move forward. Because when you go to purchase it, your price is only good, like they were saying, is only good for 30 days. If they say it's only good for 30 days, we have to wait until we're ready, until the site is ready, and then you guys would be buying it, it would be shipping, it would be stored until it's ready to be installed. But at that time, if prices go up, if there's a surcharge in materials, like we saw when we did for COVID, if it were to push us over budget, we might have to eliminate a component or something of that equipment, in which case we would have to come back. But what we're asking for approval for tonight is approval for the basis of design of what you're seeing, which is kind of the overall style and the, like, the type of equipment. So, some of them are towers, some of them are lateral playgrounds, some of them have ramps, some of them have playhouses, they're all very, very different. So, we're asking you to choose tonight, and we're making a recommendation, a company, a sales representative, and a playground manufacturer.
So, that being said, so may I interrupt? Just, what we're voting on tonight is exactly what you said, but say like, you know, the one that has two options up there. Say like, we don't like the merry-go-round with death up there, but we want to get like different, you know, slide or something. So, we have the ability to do that so long as we're selecting whatever equipment might be in their catalog or in their arsenal.
So, we'll be able to switch from A and B to allow that? Okay.
Yeah, you'll, we'll have flexibility, yes, still.
Okay.
So, that's not, that's not determined by tonight's vote.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, is there anything that anybody that can zoom in on this spreadsheet? If, is anybody interested in knowing specifics about?
If you didn't get this either, so I think it's important to note, so I wonder if this is, we can't, I have this now, then I'll pass this over to the guys over there so they can see.
Sorry, I'm supposed to be talking into the mic, sorry. If, they don't have copies of that, so I think this is important for us to note so you can see, you know, what's noted up there.
So, why don't I, why don't I review, and then I do have the images, I have more images. I'll kind of tell you, I'll say, like, Cunningham did this and did not do this, and then I'll show you the images of their, of their equipment. How about we do that? Is that, will that work? Okay.
May I ask Larry and Ruben a question real quick? What we're doing tonight is we're just voting on who we want to do this. At the later date, if they decide what they're gonna put on the playground, are we gonna have another vote at that point? Or are we just, this is just who we're dealing with and where to get there, they'll take care of who, what's going where and everything. We don't, after that, the trustees...
You have flexibility, sir.
The only way, the only reason we'd be coming back is if it went over budget or something.
Well, and those are the ones, and you, they already submit pricing on the designs already submitted, correct?
They did, yep. That was part of the proposal. They had to, they had to be under budget.
Well, you were talking, again, this is a couple of years, I mean, this will be finishing, starting in '24.
That would be where we have the ability to adjust the design, to make sure that it, it comes in. So, a contract would not be signed and purchased, items would not be purchased for over the budget.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, we couldn't purchase, store to them, put it together?
You could, it's, this is a large playground.
I, I, I understand.
You absolutely could. You could, you could purchase it next month, and you could store it until 2020, whenever you want. Yes, 2025.
I, I...
Diana's gonna need another boxcar out there.
And, and not that I think that that... Not that I think that's what we should do, but in the idea that inflation or prices or we don't have, whatever.
Sure.
That being an option from many different companies, thank you.
The only restriction there might be that I would have to look into is when you sign those contracts, the material, the equipment could be stored, but you're also signing a contract for materials and installation, so that installation comes as part of that contract. And there might be a limitation that it has to be installed within a certain number of months, and I would need, I would need to verify on that because I don't know. Each, each agency has a different...
Policy.
Policy, yep.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, does everybody have a spreadsheet now? Okay, so Cunningham Recreation, we'll just go alphabetical order, so it's the first. They complied with all they didn't, they provided three examples. They were both park and school playgrounds, but they did not tell us whether those had budgets, like whether the budgets were similar to ours, and they didn't provide us images for those. They did not provide images of any of their reference projects either. So, they just essentially gave us a listing of those items. They did state that their quote was only good for 30 days, and they did not include the cost of offloading the equipment once it arrived. So, that would be something that our general contractor would have to cover the cost of doing so. So, here is Cunningham Recreation's first option one. So, I will zoom in, this is option one at the top here. So, when we talk about creativity, we gave them a rectangular space that they potentially could use. And I will be honest that I was disappointed in most of them because nobody did anything, like, within that space to create shapes or anything. They literally just filled the rectangle with play equipment, so keep that in mind. But, looking at the individual components, this Cunningham, this option one, it does have the swing set in it. It shows the inclusive swings, it has a two to five, a five to 12, has two buckets, two belts. It has a two to five structure, there are inclusive and ADA accessible components to that. There is a merry-go-all, which is an accessible merry-go-round. There's a rocker, there's a spring load rider, there's an independent spinner. And then there is a larger structure for five to 12 on the left side with a net climber. So, this is option one. So, all of the ropes that you will see in these play equipment companies, they're all of similar construction. They are metal steel in the inside, and then they are completely encased and wrapped with, with fabrics on the outside of it so that they're safe. It's, it's like a poly vinyl, like, it's, it's softer on... Yeah, yeah. Yep. It's more, I mean, it's durable. I should have brought you, I should have brought you a, like a what? Um, it's more durable than that. Um, I'm trying to think if I could send you to, is there a park nearby that has any of the net, the ropes and the nets and stuff like that? Okay. They are very popular, they're used in almost all playground construct, like, every playground manufacturer has a type of this that they've used, that they use now in lieu of just hard metal construction, yeah. It's, they use it to do all of these, like, climbing components, or they'll do internal climbing structures. Some people like them, and some people do not care for them. All right, so, here is, so that's their option one. So, here is option two that they did, which is a slight variation. They have a smaller two to five structure, they have an arch swing, their swing set is still the same. They have still the same merry-go-round, still the same spring rider. They have a different type of structure. And then they have a climber, but this one is not a net climber, this one is a hard, it has hard pipe, hard surface climbing, and this one includes musical instruments. And then there's like a dome, a dome over here as well. So, with inclusive play, there are seven different categories that play companies try to meet. So, a lot of these independent components will check the boxes for each of those seven categories. Music is one of them. So, is like, that dome is one of the cave experiences. So, we're not only serving people of all ages that have physical disabilities, we're serving people that have emotional disabilities and sensory disabilities and all sorts of things. So, that's what all of those categories cover. So, they'll try to incorporate things throughout all of the play equipment.
I, I have a, a small question.
Yes.
The, the... Wood chips, is that what that is for the ground?
It's play mulch, it's engineered wood fiber. So, it's a shredded hardwood mulch, it's certified ASTM play surfacing, and it's also considered ADA accessible.
Okay, I, okay. I, I don't know the wood chips. Again, like I said, I haven't been to a park in years, and I know that probably has nothing to do with tonight, but it's not the easiest thing to get across, and I'm pretty abled for being disabled. That would be a, not that I'm going to the park to swing on swings, but that would be a concern for the children that I would have that are in a more permanent disabled situation, regardless if they have parents there to help with them and assist or not. I would, if you could get me a, a idea of where I can go and find this wood surface to check out, I would love that, so I can see what it's about.
Okay.
Because I know mulch is not the easiest to get through.
Amy, what's the price difference if they did the other surface?
Um, well, poured-in-place rubber surfacing, which I know we've had this discussion before in our meetings, is approximately $30 to $34 a square foot. And so, that's where we struggled before, and so when we were considering the playground and the budget and the pricing when we did the master plan, we decided that it was not within the budget to do poured-in-place surfacing for the playground. And so, that's when we decided, it was back at that time that we decided to do the engineered wood fiber because it was considered an accessible material, a safety material, and it was also less costly.
And why is it considered ADA accessible that it's just...
It meets, it meets the ASTM, the ASTM standards for compactability and mobility for devices. So, it's been through a series of tests on different types of surfaces, like, for compaction. So, it has to meet compaction requirements for fall heights off of the equipment in addition to being able to traverse over it on foot or in mobility devices. That's why, because we had this discussion when we did the accessibility plans, when we did the audits, and that pea gravel didn't qualify for that, that's when we were discussing alternates to pea gravel.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, Amy, I'm just, real quick.
Yeah.
Just to chime in on what Chuck was saying. I get a lot of bad reviews from, from the wood mulch. I know it's more expensive, but with the smaller children, maybe if we can contemplate or even consider moving or utilizing the poured-in-place or the rubber, rubberized matting around that specific areas with the smaller children or a smaller section, that would really benefit the little ones better, serve a little bit more, make it more feasible for them to get, those with accessibility, if you're gonna have music, especially ADA compliant, that would have, give it a little more accessibility. I'd like to see that, I'd, I don't know the, the price on that, what, what that is, but if we can entertain that, that would be awesome.
So, there are ways, like with the music panels, and there are some, you will see some options, where we were talking before, some of the manufacturers, there are ramps that are going up into the play structures, and those are actually not gonna be entered from the wood mulch, those will be entered right off the sidewalk. So, you don't have to go down into the mulch to reach all of the accessible components for the play structures. So, they wouldn't have to go, like, you wouldn't have to, if you're in a mobility device, you don't go down into the wood chips to get onto those structures. But the musical instruments don't have to be put into wood mulch, they can be put on concrete, so it could be on the edge of the perimeter, or we could do a cutout in an area where we have some benches nearby for parents, and those could be put, so those could be utilized both from like one side on the mulch side and on the other side from the sidewalk, where, you know, they could be on concrete. So, there's a lot of design options that we have for those, so we can, we can take a look at that.
And the price discrepancy, so it was $34 a square foot compared to what currently?
Like, $75 a cubic yard, which is a huge difference.
I, I understand.
Okay, so, of these two, I think Diana and I preferred option two better than option one just because you guys, it is very flattering here, and it has a higher tower, it's more, it has more bang for your buck, it has more wow factor, it gets you up. It was actually also to the structure that we had utilized in our master plan as our basis of design. They started with that, they, they added to it. But, again, this manufacturer did not meet all of the requirements, it was close, but didn't meet all of them. So, the next, the next company is called Compan. Compan provided their firm profile, their project team, they did state experience. They provided three examples to us with images, but the sites appeared smaller, and they were all urban sites. So, they looked like they were in, like, an asphalt environment or like a smaller, like, contained urban space. No actual, like, open parks with green areas surrounding it. They submitted documentation showing the physical benefits. showing the physical benefits. They did provide references and images. They provided history of similar services and products that were relevant. They did not give us a schedule or did not specifically say that they could meet our schedule or, you know, complete things on time. I don't know, I don't know why you would submit if you couldn't, but again, they didn't actually come out and say it or provide a construction schedule similar to some of the others that did. Design creativity, we felt it was lacking, so they did not get a check. There was just, it was just there. It did meet best practices for inclusive, inclusivity. It fit the project area. It was within budget. It covered all of the fees that we asked them to. Again, there, this one was interesting. There was a note that the proposal assumed that there was no prevailing wage requirement. So I have concerns that their budget for installation, that their installation costs would go up significantly. But they were under budget slightly, so I don't know if that would blow the budget or not. But again, it's an unknown. So I have concerns. It did say the installation contractor would need to include costs for off-site disposal. And then the sales quote was only good through the end of this year. And then they did not include any inclusive swings in their design. So they had bucket swings and belt swings. And then where we asked for two inclusive swings, they replaced it with a saucer swing, which is just like a flat fabric swing instead. So this is an image of their design. They did include a section. They opted to include a section with poured-in-place rubber surfacing and an inclusive merry-go-round that's here. So they accounted for the cost change in that. They have an upright net structure. It's like a net spinner. They have a five to 12 climbing structure. They have a two to five structure. And you can see in the background here is their swings. Instead of inclusive swings, they only have a saucer swing. So for the amount of budget that we have given, we were really hoping, I mean, this is a community playground. We anticipate there will be a significant amount of children utilizing this space at the same time. And I just, I have concerns for capacity. You can see in the rendering here how many kids they show on this structure. And it's really not that many, but it looks very, very crowded and small. So I, those, kind of, these are my feelings regarding this one. It was not, it did not make our top three. Okay, any comments on that one?
No.
Shall I keep going?
Not at all.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. The next company that submitted is Larson Equipment and Furniture Company. They provided a firm profile, project team, stated their experience. They did provide three examples. Again, they were school playgrounds, but they didn't give us budgets or sizes of the playgrounds, or there were not images provided. So it's difficult for us to gauge without going out and doing our own research and, and seeking those out to know if they really were similar. They did not address any of the physical benefits for each of the pieces of equipment provided. So we don't know, does this really, is this really a well-rounded design? We're not sure.
Was there any reasoning for that?
It was just not provided, the information was just not provided to us in their proposal submittal.
Thank you.
And in that case, it just doesn't seem like a...
They want the work.
They want the work. If they want the work, they work for it. So.
So again, no images for the references. They didn't state clearly somewhere or provide a construction schedule that they had the capacity to perform the work as asked. We didn't think it was su, their submittal is super creative, so we didn't mark that. They did, they said that they met best practices and they did provide information with the seven inclusive principles stating that it was, the design met those, and then they were within budget. Again, their sales quote was only good for 30 days and they didn't include the cost of offloading, which was common for the others. So here is Larson's design, first design. It's a tower structure. They incorporated, so you can do this. Manufacturers do this quite often. It's a great approach. It, it makes better use of space. They will combine a two to five structure and a five to 12 structure by putting a combining stepper component to the two so that the fall zones can overlap. And that's what they've done in this case. So you can see on the right side, they have a ramp that enters like a rocker that's like a fire escape. And so they're two to five structures here. They have a adjoining component and then this larger structure is their five to 12.
Is there a reason for all the dead space?
So they, again, we told them that they could have, they have this large space to utilize. They didn't have to use all of this space. And so what will happen is once we select a manufacturer, if we were to pick out equipment and go with equipment, we would then rearrange within our space. We would not just have a bunch of dead space. We wouldn't have mulch. We wouldn't have that. We would combine and condense and situate it on our site the way that it works best and potentially reduce materials. They just created a rendering or an image that would utilize what was given to them.
And, and they were given a template to say this is?
We just, we essentially said to them, they had the master plan that we, that I showed to you that had that curved space, and we gave them overall dimensions of the rectangle.
And I'm sure there's like, this one can't be close to the next one.
Correct. So each, based off of the height of something, so the higher you go up, the, the more distance there is outward that you have to keep clear. It's called a fall zone. And then that, those fall zones can't overlap unless you have an adjoining item, like a play item, which they did for the two to five and the five to 12, so that those two structures could be closer together. So they do have, it looks like they have an accessible merry-go-round and they have the three swing bays with everything that was asked for. So here it is from another view.
And this is what they're presenting by what we want? This is their idea?
Yes, correct.
With this design in mind, how close were they to that budget?
They were, this is Larson, right?
Seems like a lot less than the other, right?
So this company is called Park and Play Structure. Their quote for this option.
Like Chuck was saying, it just looks like some of the other ones that have been proposed already have more...
To offer.
More options than, than this one does. This looks like it's this, this, and there's some swings.
So all I would say too is don't forget, we're just picking the manufacturer that we want to do that. So if we like the way they manufacture it or something, we can say, forget this rocket ship. What else you got?
Right.
You know? That's going to be secondary.
Hold on one second. Nope, it's fine. I was supposed to, they were all supposed to be together. I will say that this is, this is one of the, like the super towers. So you can see that it's not going up just like once or twice. It continues to go up and the higher that you go up, the more costly that they can be. So instead of going out, they went up. A lot of the older kids enjoy going up higher and then they have the bigger slides to go down. So.
It's just interesting knowing how much square footage they had to deal with. They chose to submit with this.
And everybody, and that's, and that's why we, you know, you ask, everybody comes, has a different idea of how to utilize the space. So, and then that's the top view looking down. So.
Is there any kind of kid pool where we know what they like? Like where kids give, I like this one.
And also in, in that one that you just showed, the, the, the older kids and the, the younger kids, it looks like they're all right next to each other instead of spread out like some of the others that we've seen again. But like you said, that's what they chose to submit. So.
And that's just, that's just a preference. That's a personal preference. It's like you like green and I like red. Yeah. So we see a lot of differential, like when we do designs and, well, Diana goes every year to the Parks and Rec Conference in January and all of the manufacturers will come and they have all the play equipment and everybody has their different things and their different tastes and designs and will, you know, say, but just one park director might like one versus the other for no other reason than it's just their preference.
But also if you, if, if we all think alike and have the same ideas that are already presented and it's something that we also like, I just feel that maybe there is where you, you start.
Yeah.
You know, it helps. That's all I was getting at. I understand. None of this is, is, is in stone and, and everything can be changed and everything, but if you have the presentation, the presentation a lot of the time makes a lot of it too, you know.
Yeah.
Or recommendation.
Yeah. And it's, once we choose a manufacturer too, like we were saying, we still have the ability to modify and change and tweak things. And so if there, if Diana and if we choose to get additional input, we absolutely have that ability to do so. But we have a very short timeline because of the grant. We have to design and construct it within 24 months. And so we have to be cognizant of that as well.
One last question for all of these. Are all of these considered ADA compliant? They are all compliant?
Yes.
An ADA, okay. That way we can...
Yep, they all, they all met that.
Thank you.
Okay. So the next company, New Toys. New Toys provided a firm profile. They submitted theirs electronically. They did not give me a project team or resumes. They did not give me experience. They did not give me examples. They did not give me documentation with research. They provided me one reference via email and they provided one image of that one reference via email. They did not give me a history of similar projects. They did not tell me they had the capacity to perform anything. They were not ultimately very creative. I do not know if they, if their design meets inclusive requirements because they didn't give me any documentation saying such. But they were within budget. They fit the project area and their fee proposals included things that we asked for. The quote was only good for 30 days. So unfortunately, this was the least comprehensive of all the proposals that we saw submitted.
So they knew they were in our budget but didn't have anything to go back?
Correct. So, let's see here. Here is option one. So they have a swing bay on the left. They have a merry-go-all. They have a small two to five structure in the back with these flower pieces out of the top. They have a five to 12 structure. And then they've provided what's called a sky track. And it looks like there is an inclusive one with a regular one next to that. And they've utilized the full rectangle. I will point out, it was interesting. We did ask, we did not ask for necessarily that it be fireman themed or first responder themed, but we did say that they could incorporate it. But we did ask for all color schemes to be red, gray, black with yellow accents. So you'll see that not all of these have had that. They've all been different.
So this is what they sent us?
Correct. And here is another image, another view of that from another angle. I can kind of zoom in a little bit. Sorry. These are PDFs. They're not images like the other ones. So they're harder to, here's another, again, from another angle on the opposite side.
I don't hate it, but it's kind of scary with all the unknowns with this one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I will be honest that I was surprised because I have worked with the sales representative before and they are very reputable. So I don't know if they're extremely busy. And this maybe got pushed off and didn't have time. He actually did write to me the following day and said, I had one more thing that I wanted to send in, but it was not, it was not any of the information. He said, can I do that? And I said, no, I'm sorry. I said, this is a public bid process, this is a middle process and it needed to be in by five o'clock and everyone else I received. So.
So was there?
He had an additional option. So it wasn't other information that went.
To your working relationship with him was, or the person, was that why? They just thought kind of?
No, uh-uh. No, I, I wouldn't say that because I have good working relationships with several of these other manufacturers. So I don't...
It just sounds like somebody dropped the ball.
I think that maybe they, and, and again, I'm making an assumption, but I, so I can't say, I can't say on record that that's, but I mean, maybe, could be. But I was surprised by it.
I mean, it, it looks great and then to not have...
So here, they submitted a second option as well. So here is their second option. So there is a swing bay on the, the swing set on the left. There is a, I'll zoom in on these a little bit. There is like a, it's like a globe net climber. There's a two to five playhouse. There's a five to 12 structure here with a net climber and there's other views of these. There's musical instruments in the corner. And then there's a rocker over in this corner.
Being said again, you know, if we, like I said, this isn't bad at all. It's just scary for the unknowns. If we choose this company now, can we get these finite things that were requested in the RFP still or?
So you can, but is that fair to the others who?
Correct. That's fair. Yep. Okay.
Met all of the proposal requirements.
Got it.
So here's another view of that, like looking from a different direction.
So in your experience, was this, I'm going to show you how great our park can be and we don't have to do the rest. Is that the idea? Maybe like, look at how great our park could be and that should fall in line and speak for itself?
We, we don't know. They didn't submit stuff.
I don't know. I'm not sure what their justification was for not meeting all the proposal requirements.
Thank you.
Yeah. Again, another view of that. And then there's one more view. So there you go. So that would be, that's the last of option two for New Toys.
And I wasn't trying to ask you to speak for them. I just, I know you said you have a working relationship with these people. Maybe you knew...
I have worked with them before in the past. Yep.
Thank you.
Just for clarification, you have to go by what was submitted each time?
Correct.
And you, that's all you can go off of.
Yeah, specific to the RFP. Just like any contract that you guys submit for work, whether it be a streets project or something like that, you can't have a contractor just because they've done a job before. Say, well, I did a job for you before. I just want to, I want to do this job. This time, here's my name and number.
You have a packet or you have their packet. You gotta go from that.
Experience, all of the requirements of the job. It's the same thing for this as well.
It's kind of like a job interview type or resume. So.
Similar to that. The next one is Play Illinois. They completed every category and we didn't have any comments or exclusions. So here is their first option. They submitted more than one option. This is their first option. They have swings. They have merry-go-all. They have a two to five structure. They have a five to 12 structure. And then they have independent components that are throughout this. These panels... Um, these panels that are in here are actually STEM panels. So it's an added component, for those of you who know what STEM is. Um, so it's an added component of play, that's new, that's a new trending thing. What, I'm sorry? There you go. Here is, this board has a lot of information on it to show, um, it has like highlight, it's hard to, I don't know how to do this. So this is the five-to-twelve structure from one angle. Um, which... Oh, okay, so this is the one that we mentioned. So this, you see this is up higher. They're actually proposing that this be, um, the mobility device access point from the higher side, like on the pavilion side, where the sidewalk is, so that you can go right up to the higher, um, deck and have access to that. And then there's inclusive play options that are on that deck. Uh, they also have another ramp off the other side too, and there's a mobility device rocker there. Uh, there's musical instruments. Um, climbing structure. Trying to see if I can show you other angles. Sorry again, this board does a lot. Lot of information on one board.
And that seems like they have a lot there. Um... I, I don't know, I know you were saying fall zones, but it seems like they got a lot in it. And, and that was all in budget?
Correct, yep. So here is their second option. So this is a different design. Um, again, the swings, they have STEM panels, they have a different type of, like rocker, a merry-go-all, a two-to-five, there's some balance beams and musical components. Um, and then there's a larger, uh, two-to-five, or five-to-twelve in the back here. Um... So there's the five-to-twelve structure.
Look, let me ask a question. Any of the other ones that's, that propose, all the proposals and everything, did they ha, bring in the, the incline and the different height of the ground?
No.
This is the only one that has looked through it enough and been complete to say, "And since you have this, this is what we can do?"
So we didn't want for, so I, I felt a little guilty because they were the only ones who utilized the pre-proposal meeting.
Therefore, they have the information.
And so they knew that information, but when we issued the addendum, I extended the option and opened up two additional dates for more pre-proposal meetings. And I also listed in the addendum that there was a five-foot grade change that went across the property from east to west that could be utilized in the design if the, if the company so chose.
But had any of the other companies taken advantage?
No.
If they had taken advantage of that, they would also know this too, so therefore none of them did.
Well, they did, the, the information was given to them and they didn't utilize it.
I'm talking about the pre-meeting.
Yeah.
These are the only ones that showed up for a meeting with you guys, correct? Okay.
So, this is what, I'm sorry?
Option one.
Uh, this is option two. Yeah. So this is the back of option two from the other side. So they actually set it up so it looks like a fire station, like it says, "Moni Fire Station."
That's really cool.
Bonus points.
You should've just gotten that instead of the pavilion. Just kidding. I'm kidding. Your pavilion is beautiful. That's right. Okay, um, so the last option, um, the last company is Team Reel. They submitted, um, their firm profile, their project team, their experience. They did not submit documentation, um, specifically about the physical benefits of each of the components. Um, they did provide references and images of those references. Um, they did not specifically state that they had the capacity or could do, they could do the project within the timeframe. Um, they, we did feel that their design was creative. Um, we're not sure if it met the best practices for inclusivity because they didn't state that anywhere in the submittal information, but they did meet, um, budget requirements, and their fee proposal included everything that we asked for. Um, their sales quote stated it was only good for seven days, um, which was a lot less than the thirty days until the end of the year, so.
Seven days from tonight or when the vote happens?
Seven days from when they submitted their proposal for...
So it's already...
Which is probably already not good anymore, right?
So, uh, no, we have until Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay.
Seven business days?
It just said seven days. So here is option one. Um, there's, utilizes the rectangle, but it's more lineal. They have, they do have swing sets with all of the swings that were requested. They have musical instruments tucked in the back. They have a tower, um, climbing structure, they have a merry-go-all. They have a lineal, um, play tower structure with steppers that leads to a net, um, like a net climber. And then over on the opposite side is like a zip line track. So here's a, a closer look at part of the structure. Um, and here is the net. Here is the sky track. I will make note that it's a belt swing, so, um, it'd be hard for little users, and it's not, um, it doesn't look like it would handle inclusive. It's not inclusive. Here's the vertical climber. This is option two that they submitted. So there is a two-to-five, like, fire truck structure. There's some climbers. This looks more almost like an obstacle course, the way that they've lined it up, like a physical fitness challenge course, um, that you would start and you kind of go through in this direction, um, and then turn and go back through. And then there is a larger five-to-twelve tower, merry-go-all, and then the swings at the end as well. And there are some close-ups of this. Here's the fire truck, the two-to-five structure. From a different angle and some of those other individual components. There's the five-to-twelve structure. And there's from the other angle looking back down the opposite direction.
If you don't mind, what is that black thing with what looks like pendulum balls?
So I think that you have to, I think you have to climb through, like, make your way through them. I think it's like an obstacle, they're like moving. Reminds me, it's very, it reminds me like very like, um, Americ, American ninja warrior obstacle course, fitness course.
When I looked at it, I thought American gladiators, which was when I was a kid.
Similar. So that concludes the, all of the submittals. Um, after going through, Diana and I both feel the same way that we would like to recommend that we go with Play Illinois. Um, they are the ones who fulfilled all the requirements. Oh.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you for the, the presentation. So at this moment, if we can have a motion to...
I would like to make a motion for Play Illinois.
Close the public hearing.
Oh.
To close the public hearing.
I'll make that mo, a second.
I'll make the motion.
And roll call, please.
Trustee Rakis?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Hansen?
Yes.
Since she's out, may I vote?
Yes. All right, so now, moving on to the discussion slash approval of the proposal for Fireman's Park.
I would like to make a recommendation, I would like to, um, Play Illinois, make a motion for Play Illinois.
Second.
Okay, now open for discussion.
Okay. They cover every base. Every base, including a recommendation from, from Diana, our, our director, and, and from Farnsworth. They cover every base. They showed up, the only ones to show up for the pre, pre-meeting. Shows that they really seem to want to work with us. Um, they, they even added in, like she was saying, the STEM panels, they, they had the grade options for ADA. They covered the bases one hundred percent, and I think that they deserve the recommendation and the job.
Yeah. I know, I'm a little familiar with New Toys, and I was kind of disappointed that they didn't fulfill their obligation to give us the correct information, so. Uh, yeah. So, um, Play Illinois checked all the boxes, so it's, it seems like a no-brainer.
I mean, checked all the boxes plus, so.
Okay, now my question, Amy, then, would be what's, uh, what was their, um, the price, their quote?
So they had two options. Again, they were very thorough, so I have a lot of information here. Here, wait, we'll do just the right.
Amy, you want it? I got it right there.
You're gonna find it in the second room. Find it in that one.
Amy, I've got it right here, if you want it.
Oh, you've got the price right, well, I have the package, I just need the price. Here's this one.
It's three eleven, three forty-four.
Which option, Ruben?
Okay, so for option...
Option two, what'd you pick?
Uh, option one is three eleven, three forty-four, and option two is three twenty-two, zero seventy-seven. So now, those prices were based off of their designs, and obviously if we work with them, the pricing would be adjusted if materials and quantities are adjusted, but we would not exceed the budgets.
And that budget was, again, refresh my memory.
Three, the three hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Oh, okay, yeah. So this is, yeah, that's pretty close.
So, we would actually encourage them, we would, when we go back and we do everything, we would like for there to be a contingency, so that if there is a markup on equipment costs, um, which typically those happen usually in January, February, they happen first quarter, um, that we have that covered, and so that we're not going above and beyond that. Because I'm trying to be very diligent of our, our funds.
Park installations like this, would talk about a contingency like that, kind of like our engineering plans or when we did the building things, that there was, you know, everything included, or it includes, "Do not go over budget." So can they guarantee that, kind of like our other, like the engineers for buildings?
Yes, once we have a contract with them and we've signed that contract, then that's what we'll pay, we won't pay more than that. So we will make sure that it says that, they can't, but we would have to, there will be clauses within that contract that will say, "You have to purchase the equipment by this date, you have to take possession of it by this date, you have to have it, you know, the installation has to happen by this date. If not, you could potentially, you know, have additional fees assessed." So that's why it's all, the timing is important.
Thank you.
And their quote is good for...
So their quote, they, so we had asked initially, when they came to the pre-proposal meeting, they had already had ideas to put us, to show us, and their quote said, "Good for only thirty days." And I said, "Well, our proposal says that we need it to be good for when, you know, we construct it." And they said, "Oh, absolutely." And then they removed the "good for only thirty days." And so it does not state anywhere in their proposals that it's only good for thirty days. Theirs is the only one who doesn't have an exclusion on the pricing.
So there's no clause, which is nice. Um, and the only thing that's subject to change would be pricing of material. Um, and there would be no workman increase based upon anything else with the numbers you've given me or the board as of this moment.
If there were no changes in the design, no changes, and we signed this contract and you put down, I think there's over a certain amount, you have to put down half of that if you were to take, if you were able to meet all the requirements now, then yes, everything would stay exactly the same.
And STEM, I get it. Um... And option one and two, I, I, there's not much discrepancy, reality from what I've seen. And that meets any kind of code requirements to do this with the elevation and the five foot and all of the other things that we've said here tonight.
So I like how they did the idea, like where they're going up the higher foot, but I do not want to have it. I do not want a five-foot height difference because I would have to put a retaining wall that would be five feet height on that side, and then there would be a drop-off or a slope that would go down. And so I need to think about how that works, so I would like the opportunity to work with them to reduce the height of that deck, to make it so that it's no higher than like three feet or two and a half feet. So there needs to be some working, and that's, again, that's what has to happen once we know we're gonna go with them, to make it work with my site.
But by including that in there, it's, they're showing you that they're willing to work with us on any level that we want to go.
Right, like they, they think that it's great that there's a differential in the grade changes, and they want to utilize that to make it work and have it be unique to this particular playground, so that that's something different than you would find maybe in like another playground. So there's two opportunities to enter at different levels because a lot of times with inclusive play and there are kids that are in mobility devices, they can only enter at the lower level, and then the ramps can only take them up so far, you can't get up higher. But for them to be able to go and enter it on the upper side, like on that upper, that puts them up higher even than the lower level, and that's something that they typically don't get an opportunity to do. So it was an interesting and very creative way to incorporate that. So we gave them kudos for that.
And with this potential change, that wouldn't affect anything price-wise?
I don't know that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Amy? Any other discussion?
Last one, and they were all good with the timeframe?
Yes.
All right, if I can ask for roll call, please.
Trustee Rakis?
Yes.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Hansen?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And if I may, please have a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion, ma'am.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Wilson?
Yes.
Trustee Gonzalez?
Yes.
Trustee Hansen?
Yes.
Trustee Rakis?
Yes.
Seven twenty-two.